And are we starting late?
Nope, we're starting right now, actually, when you're ready. Okay, all right, I call this meeting to order the Union County Board of County Commissioners. This is Thursday, May 20th, 2001, our agenda-setting meeting. Mr. Clerk, please call or roll.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Present.
Commissioner Granados? Commissioner Hudek?
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Here.
Commissioner Leon? Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded?
Here.
Commissioner Staton? Vice Chair Williams?
Here.
And Chairman Mirabella?
Present.
Chairman, you have six commissioners present.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk, please lead us in the prayer as salute to the flag.
Humbly, we ask God, give her peace and the love of charity to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, while everybody is putting their video on, Mr. Clerk, please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 in the administration building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk, and good evening to everyone. Welcome to another remote meeting of this Commissioner Board. We have a lot of ground to cover tonight, so I'll begin with some brief updates on our COVID-19 testing and vaccination programs. Starting this week, we converted the test center at Kane University from a drive-through to a walk-up site, and our staff will show you how to take a nasal swab sample yourself. It's easy and it's convenient. The site is open every Monday and Tuesday morning, and you can make an appointment online at ucnj.org/covid19. You can also visit on a drop-in basis. On vaccinations, we're now offering the Pfizer vaccine ages 12 and up, the Moderna vaccine for ages 18 and up at all our county vaccination sites. If you work during the week, you've seen in plain at our free clinic in Plainfield High School, 950 Park Avenue. It will be open Saturday, May 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Visit ucnj/vax to make an appointment, or call 908-613-7VAX. Also on Tuesday, we offered the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine to residents during our emergency food distribution event at Orneko Park. It's part of our efforts to reach out to everyone in Union County with a vaccine, and we were very encouraged by the results. I'd like to thank PSENG, WellCare, the Community Food Bank of New Jersey for coming to the event with our teams to offer additional assistance. Turning to other business, I'm happy to report the renovation of Ehrlich Memorial Pool Complex at Raway River Park is complete. The pool will be open for the season on Memorial Day weekend. We're continuing our driving concerts and movies. The schedule is on the county website, ucnj.org/calendar, and remember that you need to reserve these spots online, ucnj.org/reserve. And finally, with graduation and season upon us, I want to take a moment to congratulate all of our graduates and that are participating in graduate ceremonies. Those college graduates this month and high school graduates typically in June. Graduates have certainly shown their resiliency during the COVID-19 pandemic and deserve to be commended on their accomplishment. To that end, I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to congratulate our colleague, Dr. Angela Garrettson, on her commencement from both Rutgers-Nurek and NJIT this past weekend, where she graduated a PhD in educational policy. Congratulations, Commissioner Doctor. Now, let's move to the business of tonight. We have two presentations for the board and for the public. The first presentation, I want to call on the Deputy County Manager, Amy Wagner, on behalf of the Office of Veteran Services, relative to the county's recognition as a We Value Our Veterans Community Award. Deputy County Manager?
Good evening, Commissioners. It's my pleasure to show you the award that we were presented with. The award is based on 14 different criteria. You have to earn a total of 145 points to earn the award, and we earned 160 out of a total 190 possible. And I'd like to pass off to Robert to show a brief video provided by Jana Williams, who's our Veterans Service Officer, and some words of congratulations from our governor.
Hi, my name is Jana Williams, and I'm an accredited Veterans Service Officer for the County of Union. May is a special month because it is Military Appreciation Month. Over the past year, we have been working even harder to make life easier for our country's bravest. We have installed designated veterans parking spots in our county facilities. We start our quarterly newsletter to update veterans on local and national issues, and we've upgraded the Veterans Dedicated Tree Memorial Grove in Raway River Park, which you can now scan with your smartphone to learn more information about each veteran. As a result of these accomplishments, Union County has been awarded the Governors We Value Our Veterans Community Award. This award is given to communities that are making significant contributions in support of local veteran projects, social outreach programs, and annual veteran events. If you or someone you know would like to learn more about all the other services we offer, please visit ucnj.org/uc-hero or give our office a call at 908-527-4918. Now, it is my honor to introduce the Governor of New Jersey, Phil Murphy, for a special presentation. Take it away, Governor.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Governor Phil Murphy here. I want to take a moment in tonight's meeting to congratulate Union County on being a recipient of this year's We Value Our Veterans Award. We created the We Value Our Veterans Award Program to recognize the communities going above and beyond to honor our military veterans. Union County is the proud home of thousands upon thousands of New Jerseians who have worn our nation's uniforms in times of war and in times of peace. It is also the final resting place of those who helped our nation earn and preserve our liberty in earning this recognition, and more importantly, through the breadth of veteran-based services and recognitions you provide. Union County is showing how you are making every day Veterans Day. So, to the Board of Commissioners and Veteran Services Advisory Committee Chair, my friend Al Mirabella, Commissioner Vice Chair, and other dear friend Rebecca Williams, and a whole host of other friends, Commissioners Angela Garrettson, Sergio Granados, Chris Hudek, Betty Jane Kowalski, Lourdes Leon, Kim Palmieri-Mooded, and Andrea Staton, Jana Williams and Ken Glick at the County Veteran Services Office, and everyone within county government whose support has made this recognition possible, thank you and congratulations. May God bless our honored veterans for their service. Thank you all again for the opportunity to be with you virtually tonight, and I look forward to our gathering in person real soon. God bless you all, thank you.
That's terrific from our governor, and thanks to Jana Williams and the whole staff at Veterans Affairs, including the Deputy County Manager and the County Manager. I know many of us are, you know, getting prepared to celebrate Memorial Day next weekend, and many of us also visit the gravesites of our veterans and place the flags. I want to thank our great veterans who pull that event together every year to honor our deceased veterans and those particularly who lost their lives representing and defending our country. So, what a wonderful award. It's nice to hear that praise from the governor and from the state of New Jersey, and I know all the Commissioners join me in thanking all those veterans who sacrificed so much for our freedom. I'm reminded often that freedom isn't free, and we need to work hard to respect that and enjoy that, and our veterans go a long way in allowing us to do that. So, thank you for our staff at the county for seeing through this, rightfully recognizing and honoring our veterans in Union County, and I couldn't be more proud to be in a position to accept that award on behalf of all the Commissioners. So, thank you all, and thank you, Amy, for setting that up. Okay, tonight's second presentation, I have the high honor of calling on our colleague, Commissioner Chris Hudek, to say a few words relative to the 2021 Infrastructure Awards. And a lot of us were running around delivering and helping work with our communities, but I want to turn it over right over to Chris to say a couple of words. Commissioner?
Thank you, Chairman, and I'll be brief. It's been a privilege to once again bring this program to the municipalities of Union County. This started, as everyone knows, with the sale of Reynolds Hospital and the question as to what we would do with proceeds, and we thought that the best way, or one of the best ways, was to put that money back out into the municipalities to make sure that projects that were shovel-ready had the ability to come to fruition. Happy to see that, I believe this is our seventh installment of this grant, and I think we're about 10 and a half million in, which if you factor in the municipal match, it's $21 million in infrastructure. That's pretty good work. And so, it was great to see, you know, all of us out at various towns, and it's an opportunity to see, you know, the various mayors and business administrators and public works directors who are, you know, putting these projects into action. So, it was a really great experience going out to the towns and taking the big checks out of the meeting room, Chairman, and I know there's a little bit of a presentation that the staff's come up with. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Chris, and thanks for your inspiration back when you were Chairman of this board, putting this together. And so many municipalities have really benefited from this program. Infrastructure, as you could tell, being discussed on a national level. We didn't, we started talking about it, you know, years and years ago, how important it is to maintain our infrastructure, our roads, bridges, and other things that are important to our community. So, I like to say we're a few steps ahead, and I hope that they do their job on a national level to pass that infrastructure bill. That would be terrific. So, I think we do have a video, and we could show it now, Robert, that would be great. It was really nice, I congratulate the Finance Committee for their work in working through all those submissions that we got from all the towns, but it was so nice to see the towns, and I know all the good that that's going to do around our county, and I love the song and just everything that was part of that presentation. I do hope, though, and I don't know where it is, but you really, everyone should take a chance. Maybe it's on the Berkeley Heights website or their Facebook page to see Commissioner Hudek and Commissioner Mooded and their acting. I don't know that that's necessarily their debut, but certainly their acting chops are very high and very, very good. Mayor Devaney always does a nice job being creative up in Berkeley Heights and made this year no exception. So, find that if you have to, but take a look for that video. It will be well worth the couple of minutes finding it. But I'm just delighted, I thank the Finance Committee and Chairman Hudek for that work, and all the Commissioners who supported this infrastructure grant effort. The towns have come really to rely on that, and I can speak from experience that it's well timed, very well important, and does a lot of good in the communities. Many towns use it for road resurfacing and road reconstruction, and they're able to do more roads in a summer or in a season than they otherwise would have been able to. So, that's really government helping out municipalities where they need it the most with the funding that they need. And I'm just delighted to be in a position to continue that program started years ago under Chairman Hudek at the time, and it's nice when you have a program that lives well beyond your chairmanship. So, Chairman Hudek, thank you for that inspiration at that time, and obviously, it's become a yearly event and a good program for a municipality. So, I want to thank everybody for their work for that and congratulate the towns for other projects that are going to get done now. We have a third quick presentation, and I want to call no stranger to Union County, Joanne Gemenden, who worked many, many years as our recycling queen of our entire county. She has since moved on to larger role, helping even more people with recycling, and she would like to talk a little bit, and we'd love to hear about Bag Up New Jersey. So, Joanne, can you please talk about that for a couple of minutes?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Commissioners. I will be very brief. As most of you know, last November, November 4th of 2020, the governor and the legislature of New Jersey passed the most sweeping bag ban legislation in any state, which goes into effect next May, May 4th of 2022. No plastic bags will be allowed in any store in New Jersey. It also bans paper bags as well in grocery stores that are larger than 2,500 square feet. So, this legislation actually impacts every resident and business in our entire community. We just launched our statewide campaign, which is Bag Up NJ, and we just filmed, actually, on Monday, a PSA with the DEP Commissioner, Sean Lotterett. It's going to be announced or debuted next week at our annual conference. I'll make sure I share that with you. But tonight, Union County will be the first county to proclaim the month of May as Bag Up NJ Month. So, I just want to thank you for your support. It's a group effort, you know, it takes a village especially to prepare for this legislation. So, I'm here to help educate the residents going forward, and just, I want to thank you.
Well, Joanne, thank you for all your efforts, and it's your great influence about recycling and education all through the years that we all have had a chance to listen to you either speak to groups or be out in front, and the communications, you know, we all feel we're on the cutting edge of environmentalism in Union County and helping our environment. Recycling is such a big part of that first county to establish that. Doesn't surprise me, so I'm really proud of that and happy for that. So, thanks for sharing a couple of words on that, and we'll look forward to passing that at our next meeting. So, thank you, Joanne.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on now to resolutions from our various departments. We have our first, I'm going to ask Sheriff Corvelli to present his resolutions on behalf of his department. Sheriff?
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. The Sheriff's Office has two resolutions on the agenda this evening for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. I have my screen up, if people have their hand up, I will be happy to call them. I do not see any, so Sheriff, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
We'll move on to the Department of Economic Development, and that is Amy Wagner, our Deputy County Manager. Amy?
Good evening, Commissioners. The Department of Economic Development has seven resolutions for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. I see Commissioner Kowalski, Commissioner?
Thank you, Chairman. Deputy County Manager, can you just talk about the workforce development resolutions here? I assume those are partly grant-funded. How much of that is county expenditures?
Absolutely. All of this is federal money, and all six of the resolutions related to the Workforce Development Board are really just concurring with actions that were taken at the meeting that took place of the Workforce Development Board earlier this month. They really are, because of COVID, a lot of programming got changed. Some of our schools that would have trained people were not functioning. So, what most of these do in some manner or fashion is help us spend down the money so that they don't go back and make way for us to be able to spend more in this year when we know we're going to need it even more. I hope that answers your question.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions? I do not see, so thank you, Deputy County Manager. We'll move to the Department of Engineering, Public Works, and Facilities Management, and that is Director Craziano.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. I have eight resolutions on tonight for your consideration, and I'll try and answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Director. Let's see if there are any questions. I do not see any, thank you very much, Director.
Keep up the fun. Thank you very much, Commissioner, thank you.
We'll move to the Department of Finance, and Director Taylor is not with us, but I know Eric Masaius is. So, Eric, could you present your resolutions, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioner, Chairman, and Board of Commissioners. The Finance Department has several resolutions for your consideration, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, very good. I see six resolutions from Finance, and if there's any questions? Does not appear there are, so Eric, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will move to the Department of Human Services, and that is Director W. N. Anderson. Director?
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. The Department of Human Services has seven resolutions on tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Director Anderson? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you, Director. Department of Parks and Recreation, Director Zuber?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Department of Parks and Recreation has three items on tonight's agenda, and I'll try to answer any questions you have.
Okay, VC, do you have a question? Go ahead, Vice Chair. I got you.
I'm sorry, I couldn't get the button. Ron, could you just give us a little bit more detail on the upgrades that are going to be occurring at Ponderosa?
Okay, Vice Chairman, this is the upgrade for the two fields that were completed last year. This and the other resolution are amendments for money we're getting back. But we have two all-purpose fields out there at Ponderosa. They were grass when we installed them in 2011, they're turf now. Soccer, lacrosse, and football.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair. That was going to be my question, so I appreciate you asking it. Anybody else? Don't see, all right, Director Zuber, thank you.
Thank you.
Department of Public Safety, and that is Director Moran.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Department of Public Safety has two resolutions for your consideration. I'll try and answer any questions you have.
Okay, are there any questions for Director Moran? Okay, Director, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The Office of the County Council, Bruce Bergen?
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, good evening. Office of the County Council has two resolutions on the agenda tonight. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, are there any questions, Vice Chair?
Thank you, Chairman. Actually, I just have a question about number two. This, let's see, the services, is that in a fixed amount of time? Is there a beginning-ending, or is that just until the funds are allocated?
Yeah. This law firm, Florio Perucci, has been outside counsel to assist us for the past 14, 15 months, whatever it is, in complying with federal regulations concerning the CARES Act.
CARES, right, okay.
This new resolution tonight is to bring them, to really keep them on board, but it's a new contract because it has to do with the new federal funds, the American Rescue Plan Act.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Essentially, they're there because they can advise us on the federal regulations. It's very complicated, there's a lot of money involved. We want to make sure we get it right, and so, we're bringing them back to continue to give us their expert advice.
Okay, thank you so much.
I, to answer your specific question, there's no timeframe. The money, we just, this week, received the first payment from the federal government. The second one, to my understanding, will come about a year from now, and we have until the end of 2024, if I have it correctly, to spend the money. Obviously, as things go on, there may be less questions, but I would anticipate we may have them, they're available right through the end of the spending.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chairman, as well.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay, anybody have any other questions? Does it appear so? Thank you, County Council.
Thank you, Chairman.
We'll move to the Office of the County Manager, and that's County Manager Ed Oatman.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm having a little problem with my video. It's telling me the host has stopped it, so I'll just have to go on the audio route for this one. Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I have two resolutions on tonight's agenda. I'd be happy to ask or answer any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. County Manager, can you tell us a little bit about the nurses' contract agreement?
Sure, Commissioner. It's a one-year contract that commences from June, January 1st to December 31st. It's a 2% increase. And it also trades Lincoln's birthday as a holiday for Juneteenth, once all the other bargaining units agree to that. Those are the highlights. With COVID, we are, with our unions, with a lot of things being uncertain, we're doing one-year contracts right now. We're on board. The unions are on board. Just to see what the world looks like in a year or two.
So let me just follow up if you don't mind. So we used to have a large number of nurses when we ran all of Ronald's. So now, does this include the nurses who are over at the vaccine center?
Yes and no. Some of the nurses, because of our census, has been down because of COVID at Cornerstone, have been assisting with testing and vaccines. Some of the nurses at those sites are volunteers and we've also contracted with groups like the Visiting Nurses Association to fill the void. So this only applies to the people who are day-to-day employees of us.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for our County Manager? I do not see any. So we're going to move to Commissioner-sponsored resolutions. Is there any questions or comments relative to those? There are 18. I don't see any. So I'm going to. We're going to move on and I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn this agenda meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Hudak. May I have a second, please? Looks like Commissioner Garrettson. So it's been moved and seconded, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrison?
Yes.
Commissioner? Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Palmieri Muedad?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Williams? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. And then Chairman Mirabella.
Aye.
Chairman, you have six votes for the adjournment.
Okay, very good. We are adjourned. Do we need any? Do we need any reason to delay going into the regular meeting?
No, Chairman, we can go directly into the regular meeting for tonight.
Okay. All right, so I'll call this meeting to order of the Union County Board of County Commissioners, Thursday, May 20th, 2021, regular meeting. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados. Commissioner Hudak?
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Here.
Commissioner Leone? Commissioner Palmieri Muedad?
Here.
Commissioner Staton? Vice Chair Williams?
Here.
And Chairman Mirabella?
Aye.
Chairman, you have six Commissioners present for the regular meeting.
Okay, please, please plan on the prayer and salute to the flag.
Humbly, we ask God to give her peace and the love of charity to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, very good. While we're putting our videos on, please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of the New Jersey statute annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 in the Administration Building and further by following the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. May I have a motion to approve the communications?
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by the Vice Chair and seconded by Commissioner Kowalski. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Palmieri Muedad?
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams?
Aye.
And Chairman Mirabella?
Aye.
Chairman, you have six votes in the affirmative on the communications.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 8th Agenda and Regular Meeting and the April 22nd Agenda and Regular Meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Kowalski. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by the Vice Chair. Make sure I got that one right. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Chairman. Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Palmieri Muedad?
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams?
With the exception of the April 22nd Agenda Setting Session, that one I will abstain from, but I to all the others.
And Chairman Mirabella?
Aye.
Chairman, you have six votes in the affirmative on all agenda, I mean, all meeting minutes, with the exception of the April 22nd Agenda Setting Session minutes, where you have five votes in the affirmative and one abstention.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We're going to move on to our one ordinance tonight. Mr. Clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance number 829-2021, an ordinance to amend Part 1, the Union County Administrative Code, Chapter 1, Union County Government Structure by amending Article 14 Departments, Divisions, Bureaus, Section 171, Departments enumerated, deleting Article 20, Department of Corrections, and amending Chapter 140, Contracted Off-Duty Employment of Law Enforcement Officers. Thank you.
Okay, that's, that is 829-2021. I'm going to ask Vice Chair Williams, the Policy Chairperson, to move that ordinance.
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to move ordinance 829-2021 for first reading and authorize the clerk of the board to advertise same in accordance with the law. The public hearing and final reading will be scheduled to be held on June 10th, 2021.
Okay, very good. So that's been moved. May I have a second, please?
Thank you.
Okay, so second by Commissioner Granados. Welcome to the meeting, Commissioner. So it's been moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leone? Commissioner Palmieri Muedad?
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams?
Aye.
And Chairman Mirabella?
Aye.
Chairman, you have seven votes, seven votes in the affirmative for ordinance number 829-2021.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that. May I have a motion now to suspend the rules to allow for the joining of both the public comment on resolutions being offered for adoption and the public comment for any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the Union County and to one open public meeting comment session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by the Vice Chair, seconded by Commissioner Kowalski. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leone? Commissioner Palmieri Muedad?
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams?
Aye.
And Chairman Mirabella?
Aye.
Chairman, you have seven votes in the affirmative to suspend the rules?
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The meeting is now open to anyone who wishes to speak on resolution being offered for adoption or any other matter. I will start the meeting by opening up the Zoom to those individuals. Please understand that there's a five-minute time limit that will display on the live stream indicating green until the four-minute mark, then yellow, then red at the five-minute mark. Mr. Clerk, I believe we have one individual that has signed up to make comments, so let's move on to that individual, please.
Absolutely. We have Mr. Bruce Patterson in our queue is the one and only member of the public in our queue joining us today.
Okay, Mr. Patterson, you have the opportunity to make your comments. Please do so.
Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Dr. Garrettson of the Commissioner Board, this is Bruce Patterson, Garwin, New Jersey. REZO 371, 372 and 375, these are three grant REZOs, one from the feds for $65 million called American Rescue Plan and two from the state for $115,005 million. It's good to see we are receiving additional monies to tide us through another pandemic year. Unfortunately, it's all part of this huge borrowing, which the taxpayers, of course, will have to pay back in the future. REZO 386, this is a REZO for $286,000 to Timmerman for road maintenance equipment for the Educational Services Commission. Why are we buying road maintenance equipment for the Educational Services Committee, who has no roads in their agency description? Questions for public clarification. Where is, is these roads? Where is the equipment stored? Who is to maintain and also work with this equipment? Where is our county road maintenance equipment? This sounds like another abuse of taxpayer money. REZO 397, it's a REZO to Easy Go for $1.9 million in new golf courts, carts. We bought a million dollars or so in golf court cart equipment about eight years ago. Why are we buying new equipment now? And what happens to all the existing golf carts? REZO 405, that's a REZO increasing the legal costs of $35,000 to Chase and Lamparello for Trigo versus Prosecutor Lindsey Ruttolo. I shake my head at this. Just more tax money being wasted on Prosecutor Ruttolo's defense of three lawsuits. I have to reiterate that you must have her step down and have someone with experience replace her as prosecutor. This total fiasco in the prosecutor's department gives a perfect excuse for people when called for jury duty to avoid the jury duty due to no trust or confidence in the leadership and the prosecutor's department. REZO 406, a REZO for $50,000 to law firm Florio Perucci and Taylor as special counsel over tracking the stimulus monies. This is your county CFO, Bibby Taylor's husband's legal firm. Last year, you gave him $250,000 and it's starting all over again. They are not accountants, yet you are, you are wasting these stimulus monies on them because of some kind of nepotistic scam. Bibby Taylor made the news yesterday and I, I see she's keeping a low profile today. The Taylors have become rising stars in the corrupted political cesspool we call New Jersey. In fact, both of them created an amazing alternative to wheeling contributions, where you throw your hat in the ring, pulling all sorts of donations and fundraisers, and then drop out of the race. Then you have all this free money to give to campaigns that is not yours to give. Example is an $8,000 donation Bibby just gave the county Democrat political boss Senator Nick Scutari for his campaign. Ingenious and corrupted at the same time. Where did Bibby get a lot of her donations? From the same architectural firm who she pushed to get a no-bid multimillion-dollar contract to design the new government complex and states she has a personal close relationship with. She and her husband should return the illicitly gained monies, not use it for their personal whims. Plus, I am still wondering about Bibby's double-dipping job when the county bylaws state only one full job is allowed, full-time job is allowed. Makes me want to squeeze the heads of those who show such a lack of integrity. Some like Bibby Taylor, Nick Scutari, Al Mirabella, Ann Sullivan, and, and just watch the pussies out since there's no brains. I'm still shaking my head about CFO Bibby Taylor lying to us that we have a flat budget for two years when clearly her documents, budget documents, actually show otherwise. Time to dump the Taylors and apparently corrupted Scutari as your puppet master, who by the way, also made embarrassingly bad news yesterday. Final resolution, Resolution 401-6. This is commemorating Juneteenth in the month of June 2021. For Juneteenth, why don't you satisfy Mr. Ishmael's and Ms. Shambles's request about having a plaque installed outside the courthouse where three enslaved people were burned to death about 200 years ago? That would be great because they've been asking this for months. So thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Patterson. Let's move, you just made some comments on a few things, but I will entertain some comments and some answers on 386. And can I ask Director Graziano to, to speak on that, please?
Sure, Commissioner, not a problem. The E.S.CNJ is a purchasing co-op, so the educational, educational commission, that's, educational, educational, educational services is a co-op that the county uses to purchase equipment. So we're buying a street sweeper for our roads. We're not supplying anything to the, to the Education Commission for anything that they have. We're just using this co-op to purchase. It's one of many co-ops that we use to purchase. They do the bidding and we're able to use any of the products that are on there for purchase. So we're spending capital money on a street sweeper for Union County roads, not for educational purposes.
Okay, and that's because we recognize a low price to purchase that, is that correct?
Yes, of course. Yeah, well, they did all the bidding already, so you're able to just go right onto the co-op and you're able to use any of the, any of the stuff that they have out there, you know, to purchase. So it's just a co-oping purchase, co-oping purchasing program that we use. And it's, you know, you know, like I said, one of the many that we use currently.
All right, very good. Thank you, Director. Appreciate that. I don't know if I mentioned, I think I did mention direct Commissioner Granados and Commissioner Leone both are with us right now in the meeting. Jimmy, please note that.
Fully noted.
We'll move to, I think it's 397 on the golf carts, Director Zubor, Director Sanchez, if you can give some comments on that, please.
Shirley, yes, to Mr. Chairman, Mr. Patterson was incorrect. We did not purchase our golf carts eight years ago. We haven't purchased carts in a very long time. We actually lease our golf carts, our entire fleet. And this is a lease for four years with Easy Go, which will be about 272 vehicles. That includes not only all of our passenger vehicles for our golf courses, but also maintenance vehicles on the golf courses, as well as our shuttles, beverage carts and whatnot. What we see in the 1.8 is our total contract cost over four years. What we can expect in revenue is about $3.2 million in revenue back to the county. And that's given our current rate structure on our golf carts. That doesn't mean that if we do change that, that revenue, if we do increase our fees in the, in the future, they, obviously the revenues will go up.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Director. Appreciate that. I don't know. I think it was 408 if County Council or County Manager Oatman wished to speak on that.
I'm 408, speaking about Florio.
I could talk about that. Chairman, Mr. Patterson is correct. They're not accountants. What the firm does is there's a lot of intricate regulations about the federal requirements about how and what you can spend the money on. And they work with us to make sure we do not get audited and don't have to pay all this money back to the feds. So it's in the taxpayer's best interest to provide counsel to make sure we are within the rules of how this money is spent. Last year, we received about $97 million. This year, $65 million. Next year's another $65 million. That's a lot of money to be responsible for.
That's a lot of money to be responsible for.
Right. Absolutely. And I believe they performed well in their previous task, so that's thus we're moving forward in this, this new world. Okay. Thank you, County Manager. Appreciate that. All right, I'm going to leave it at that. And Mr. Clerk, is there any other individuals looking to speak?
Chairman, I, I do not have anybody in a queue to speak, nor have I received any other emails to read into the record.
Okay, very good. I'll close that portion of the meeting. And we will move on to, to, to the vote on our resolutions. I will let the board know that I'm going to pull one of the resolutions, two thousand and twenty-one dash three six nine. Of just further consideration, communication. I have some questions about that. I'm sorry I did not bring that up in the first meeting, but I wish to pull that. So we'll move forward and consider that at a future meeting. With that note. Yep.
Chairman Jim Pelletieri, just wanted to clarify. So when we do go to a motion to, to vote, we will be pulling Resolution three six nine, three seventy as printed on the agenda will be the new three six nine and so forth. So we will be ending our vote with the, with resolution number.
Four twenty one.
Four twenty one, correct.
Okay. All right, that's, that's fine. I actually did all the calculations in my head to remove that and do before and after, but you made it even easier. That's just fun. Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to approve Resolutions three six eight through four two one. May I have a motion, please?
Chairman, before we move that, I just want to clarify. This is moving Resolutions three six four through four twenty one.
Right, I'm, I'm sorry. You're right. Three six four.
Thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Okay, is that moved by the, I'm sorry, who moved that?
Vice Chair. Vice Chair moved, seconded by.
All right, perfect. I, I usually get at least one wrong per night. Moved by the Vice Chair, seconded by Commissioner Mude. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Chairman. Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Granados.
Hi.
Commissioner Hudak.
Hi.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Leon.
I.
Commissioner Palmieri Mude.
I.
Vice Chair Williams.
I.
And Chairman Mirabella.
I.
Chairman, you have eight votes in the affirmative on all resolutions.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move on to Commissioner reports and comments. And I'm going to call first on Commissioner Kowalski. Commissioners.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to remind the public that we have been seeking input on truck traffic around Union County. And we have our truck mobility study that's been ongoing. And we're going to have a public meeting about it next Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, at two in the afternoon. It'll be a virtual meeting, so anyone who wants to get updated on truck traffic can sign on to that meeting. And you can get the details on our website, ucnj.org/truck-study or just search for truck study when you go to ucnj.org. We want, I, I mean, during COVID, I'm sure people have noticed that the, the truck traffic and traffic in general, the patterns have changed. So we want to keep track of this. Already, we have identified thirty-five areas of concern and ten priority locations. Certainly, if, even if you can't get on to the, the meeting, please have a look at our website and let us know if there are places that you feel are concerned regarding truck traffic. So we want to get comments from as many people as possible, and that will help us try to improve the whole traffic situation for everyone in Union County. So, thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate you. We'll move to Commissioner Hudak.
Thank you, Chairman. Very briefly, it was great to see Joanne Giamendam at the top of the meeting. We, we miss her greatly as the, as you, you mentioned, the queen of recycling in Union County. But great to see that she's taking a statewide leadership role in, in, and a, and a well-earned retirement from Union County. So with that, I'll bank the rest of my time, Chairman.
Very good, Commissioner. Thank you. Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes, thank you so much, Chairman. I just want to thank the county. I want to thank all of the county team, the commissioners, for just really surprising me tonight. It was very lovely to come off of a week of a lot of excitement, so to speak. But I now will include you all in my next highlight video because it was truly touching to see that tonight. Thank you. I really, really appreciate it. I just wanted to also share that I'm looking forward to hearing more about the marketing, rebranding. So I will be following up with our county manager and others. I know that has been an important undertaking. So I do look forward to getting some more information on that. I know it's been something we've been working on for a while. In addition to seeing if it is possible for Juneteenth or the month of June to try to memorialize some of the history that has been brought up before this Commissioner Board. So I just want to say a huge thank you. I truly do appreciate, appreciate each and every one of you for motivating me, but also just for being there in any way that you could be. So I just want to really just again thank everybody who's on the call. But most importantly, I want to thank my colleagues tonight because you guys helped me through a couple of weeks that was a little challenging, but we made it through. So thank you.
Congratulations again, Doctor. We're going to move to Commissioner Granados.
Thank you, Chairman. The Board of County Commissioners invites residents to our annual Union County Portuguese Flag Raising Ceremony in commemoration of the Day of Portugal, the Mois in the communities. This event will take place on Thursday, June tenth at four PM in front of the Union County Courthouse located at Two Broad Street in Elizabeth, maintaining all social distancing guidelines. This is, Venice free to attend, and this event's being cosponsored by the Portuguese American Leadership Council of the United States, also known as Palkus. Palkus is a national nonprofit based in the Washington DC area with the defined mission to be national voice and advocate for and promotes the advancement of Portuguese Americans, communities economically, professionally, culturally, and politically. Union County is home to over eighteen thousand Portuguese Americans, and the Commissioner Board is proud to acknowledge the contributions of this very active and hard-working community to our county over the years by once again raising the Portuguese flag over the county seat. Our county is made stronger by diversity and inclusion of all. This flag raising brings together a Portuguese community at a time when we are slowly and safely returning to our annual traditions and celebrating, giving us a chance to once again showcase our hard work, pride, and unity. As a member of the Portuguese American Center, it's a true honor to look forward to this flag raising. I hope to see everyone there. Thank you, Chairman. Congratulations, Dr. Garrettson. I am sorry I missed the video. Everybody's seeing how amazing it was, so congrats. Thank you, Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Granados, thank you. Commissioner Mude.
Thank you, Chair. Again, congratulations, Dr. Garrettson. It's really a great accomplishment. I'm very proud to know you. So congratulations. And I want to just congratulate all of the other graduates that have already graduated. Many of the colleges have. I know Chairman, your daughter graduated last year, but was able to actually participate in the ceremony this year. So congratulations to her. And we have high school graduations coming up, as well as our kindergarten and preschool graduations. I have a preschooler who will be graduating in a week or so. So I want to just congratulate all of the families. This year was not easy. Thank all of the teachers and the academic staff members, school officials, school employees who really went above and beyond to make the community safe for our kids and effective, whether it was learning at home or learning in person. I cannot commend our academia enough for, for getting through this year. So, and our parents. We did it. It's, the year is almost over. And, you know, it was not an easy one, but I hope by September, we're back to some normalcy. And with that, I will close. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. I'll pass those very, very nice comments to my daughter, who is still in Italy, was able to get over there, thankfully, through a lot of hard work and participate, as you say, graduating in twenty twenty, but having the ceremony in twenty twenty one. So we're very proud of her and, and all our graduates. Terrific. Thank you. Commissioner Leon.
How are you, everyone? I was a little late today. I just want to share with everyone that I had the honor of seeing my Cuban flag being raised at the City Hall in Elizabeth today in commemoration of Cuban Independence Day back in nineteen, nineteen oh two. Everyone knows that Cuba is not free, and I'm very lucky to be here. So I got a little emotional there because thanks to my parents' courage, I was able to fulfill the American dream. They came here and America's my home, but my roots are from Cuba. And it was amazing. And Sergio was right there next to me, giving me support. I really enjoyed it. I also just want to touch on the fact that it's Mental Health Month and also Older Americans Month. And I support those two causes very much. And in closing, we have the food drive on Saturday and that phenomenal Latin concert in the evening. So everyone is welcome. And again, thank you. Am I getting a late slip from the chairman for being late today? Thank you, everyone.
No, I know.
Congratulations, Dr. Garrettson.
I know, Commissioner, sometimes it's hard to be in two places at once, as much as our, the pressures of our agendas are and our calendars are very great at times. And we all try to do our best to, to be in as many places we can, representing our community. And that was important for your representation and Commissioner Granados to be at that flag raising. So thanks for your running around to be there. And the fact that you were a little bit late is not any kind of issue. It just shows the dedication you have and the other commissioners have to, to represent the people that put us here. So that's what we do. So don't ever, don't ever feel bad. Try to be in multiple places. It's very difficult to, to achieve.
Thank you.
So I think we're moving on now to the, the Vice Chair, Vice Chair Williams.
Thank you, Chairman. I just have one reminder about the events that we are planning in recognition of LGBTQ plus Pride Month, which is coming up in June. As part of the festivities on Saturday, June fifth, we'll be welcoming the eighties tribute band Rubik's Cube to our series of driving concerts. It is a free concert, but as with all of our driving concerts, you will need to register in advance. So please reserve your spot at ucnj.org/reserve beginning on May twenty eighth. Also, on June ninth, you can tune into our Queer Empowerment Hour online discussion series for an episode on the history of LGBTQ Pride Month. And I do want to offer my congratulations to Michaela Mirabella, who is our host for the Queer Empowerment Hour on her graduation. And you can get the Zoom link for Queer Empowerment Hour, updates on all of our Pride Month activities by visiting the Office for LGBTQ Affairs online at ucnj.org/lgbtq. And I also want to congratulate again my colleague, the doctor in the house. Congratulations, Commissioner Garrettson, PhD. That's all I have for this time, Chairman. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you, Vice Chair. And, and I'll just add just a little footnote to your announcement about some pride activities coming up. But many of our municipalities are now having their own pride events, which I'm delighted to see. Scotch Plains is no exception to that. On June third, please feel free. I know the Vice Chair is going to be one of our keynote speakers at that first annual pride celebration with the flag raising and, and a band and some activities for the, for the children. And it's going to be a nice event downtown Scotch Plains. So come out and look for other events. Our, our communities and our municipalities do a terrific job of celebrating pride and every other event. So look out for what you can do locally and support your municipalities. And we always do what we can to support things from a county perspective. So that's terrific. I'll end, I, I think we've had a very productive and a very good meeting. I will thank, for one second, my wife for this wonderful background that I have behind me. I didn't want Corvelli or his wonderful wife to get all the credit. She helped me put this background together. And I feel really cool and technologically hip to have such a wonderful background. But I couldn't let the sheriff and his family take over. I had to at least call my tech team together and put this. So I'm happy to, to have that behind me. Anyway, with, with all that, I guess we are set and had a great meeting. I appreciate all of you for what you do, Commissioners, around our county. I can't look too far without one of us being someplace and doing something, reaching out to the community, helping, volunteering, or just listening. And that's what we do. We, we work with our community. We're accessible to our community. And, and I'm just proud to be among you. So with that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Okay, moved by the Vice Chair, seconded by, it looks like Commissioner Mude. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Granados.
Hi.
Commissioner Hudak.
Hi.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Leon.
I.
Commissioner Palmieri Mude.